I'm going to call the meeting of the Northern Planning Board to order. And all members are present this evening except for Mr. Daley. So, the way we're going to work is we're going to have a short update from our planning director, and then we'll get into the first public hearing. We'll entertain questions, comments, et cetera, on each of the zoning articles, and then move to the next one sequentially. We'll also have a short presentation on these proposals before we open up for the hearing. So, first item on our agenda will be the current planning and development director. So, just a couple of current applications in process. Special permit 469 for East Hockeys shared driveway that started the hearing last public meeting, and it is continuing until April 4th. And, you know, with the application that has been found, it is currently being revised here, and should be waiting up to some more. 316 East Main Streets, Norton South Storage, which is special permit 468. Peer review has begun, so he was doing that, and they dropped it off to the town board that I'll be distributing shortly. Decisions on special permit 466, which is 46 Commerce Way. The 20 Vale Field Period is until March 27th. Some previously permitted projects, New England Ice Cream, I had a meeting with Campanelli today to talk about final site inspections. Walkway's been reconstructed for E5 East Main. And we're still waiting on the spring planting season for Wheaton Solar. Some other planning news, the Direct Local Technical Assistance Award from Serpeth, Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development Agency, has given us $6,000 in technical assistance to create a complete streets policy for the town of Houston. So, we're going to be eligible for implementation funds from MAST after that. So, we'll get that started. An open space plan survey is open, and this has been posted on our Twitter and Facebook page to support the open space recreation plan. And Ed Bailey and I attended a citizen planning conference this past weekend, so I put lots of good information on the zoning act, and zoning information is available on Dropbox at the county door. I also have sent out a survey, and hope you can get back to me, and just try to increase efficiencies for our department, and talking a little bit about getting together with the new board members and having an orientation at the meeting, which is allowed at the end of the meeting. So, then upcoming workshops include the local update census addresses workshop that I'll be attending on Thursday, and a backyard chickens workshop to develop that bylaw that's got me scheduled. Okay. Now, being past 7:18, I'm going to open the public hearing, proposed zoning article 23, missing the fountain avenue and Eddie Street rezoning. If you can't hear me, I'll, I'll, you're the object, okay. I'll stand up or I'll sit down, just let you know. So, it's four parcels on three and a half acres, proposed changes from industrial to residential, six zones along portions of Taunton, Newtown Avenue, and Eddie Street. And we're going to have a short presentation of what this looks like. I don't know if you can see this. Can everyone see this? So, I've put together a short PowerPoint with a few slides of each of its zoning amendments we're proposing, just to give an overview of the process and how it works. So, basically, we are at step four at the planning board, holding a public hearing tonight, so we're looking for public comment, and we may talk about vending proposals. And then that, from there with the issuing of the report, the planning board will be issuing the report, their decisions, and forwarding that to town meeting for the final votes on these things. So, starting off with Taunton Avenue, it's four parcels, have three and a half acres, and they're proposing to change what is zoned industrial to residential, 60, which is a type of residential zoning, along portions of Taunton and Newtown Avenue and Eddie Street. So, this is an aerial view of that area, just to acquaint you with the area. It's on 140 here, Taunton Avenue. And the proposed article language, which is in the open, we need to notice, is a little confusing, but basically to see if the town will approve to change the zoning map, to change these areas of land, we have listed assessors' maps as shown, the four parcels from industrial to residential. So, that's been proposed to the planning board. These are the maps showing the area. This, the purple is the industrial zoning in the area, and then you see the darker brown is commercial, and the lighter beige is residential. And then these are just wetlands.
None of that is correct. That's bad.
So, go back to the zoning. We'll take hearings, but, so, this is the current, purple's the current.
Yeah, that's not correct, though. Everything to the left of those three lots, except for one small parcel, is residential 60.
Right. The, that's the, the Whistle Farm had been rezoned. I think the problem is that the dial is unupdated, but we're aware that Whistle Farm had been rezoned.
And then the property next to it, which is by property.
Was rezoned R60? Okay. So, yeah, my apologies for that. I should have said this at the beginning, but Serpeth made these maps for us based on draft zoning, and there may be some inaccuracies we may pick up, but we hope that they capture the aspects of it. So, go back to the four lots there. Those four lots that are shown in the green, darker green outline, those are the four lots that are being proposed to change from industrial to R60, which would then bring R60, which is something similar to what was done for Whistle Farm a couple of years ago. So, just a little bit more information on that. The background, as I said, the properties are located on top now. The four parcels are outlined in detail here. The parcels in question are occupied by residential homes. The area is within the community of the ACEC. The board of selectmen have fully supported this proposal, according to a letter that is attached. You'll find all these in my comments under star, and comments from Jennifer Carlin, another conservation agent, which has been included in the record, mentioned there is a wetland permanent on file that has not been completed for map 32 parcel 32. So, we would recommend that the planning boards vote to support the proposed language and forward to town meeting. At this time, I can read out the opponent's.
My name is Mark Hoesley. I am the owner of 312 Taunton Avenue, which is the one on the left side if you're heading south, going into Taunton. And the three properties on the other side of the street, 307, 305, and 307 Newtown, and one Eddie Street, is the one on the corner. Town did a great job of presenting what we're like to do, but let me give just a brief history. This property, 312, was built as a house, a model home for a modular home builder. They used it as a model home and as a sales office for years, and then they went bankrupt, and the property got foreclosed on. When my wife and I bought this, we checked on the town website, the assessor's website, where you get all the information about the property, and there are four different locations on the field card, or the property field card, that say that it is zoned as residential, and to be used as residential. Then when we started exploring things with Jennifer Carlin, the water management issues for the conservation commission, we were told that it's actually zoned industrial and cannot be used as a residential property. So, no one has ever lived there, it's just been used as a sales office, but it is, has four bedrooms, two and a half baths, it's a beautiful home, and we were told we have one of two choices, to either try to sell the property as commercial or as industrial property, they can use it for commercial purposes, or to see if we could get the zoning changed. And that's obviously why we're here. We've owned it for, it'll be a year next week, and we live here in Norton. I've lived here for 10 years, my wife has lived here for 25 years, and we thought we were buying a house in which people could live, and then found out that that isn't the case. So, a couple of other points in favor of changing it is that the character of the neighborhood has changed dramatically since 1973, when this area was zoned industrial. If you've ever been down Eddie Street on the left-hand side there, that's all residential, and all the way up and down Route 140, Taunton Avenue, has also become residential, and old Taunton Avenue and that whole area has become much, much more residential. Our property is the only property that has been built since zoning went into effect in 1973. The other three houses are houses, they are residential, and they are allowed to continue to be residential because they were grandfathered in, they were pre-existing at the time that the zoning went into effect. I don't want to go into too much, but this has become a real personal hardship for my wife and I, trying to pay two mortgages. You know, in retrospect, we certainly would have done things differently, but we closed on the property, we now own it, and have another property here in Norton that we're going to be looking to sell one of them. The zoning can change. We have been unsuccessful in trying to sell it as a commercial property. It has been on the market for since just after we bought it, and there has been no interest at all in it as a commercial property, because it's a house. Any questions?
What size is the lot?
The lot is, actually, it straddles the Norton-Taunton line. There is 0.93 acres in Norton and 1.99 in Taunton, which is almost entirely wetlands. The, actually, the map is a little bit wrong, the house does not cross over the property line, but where the house is currently located is the only buildable spot on the property because of wetlands.
Wait, wait, sorry. I might as well bring it up now. I just have one, like, I can remain neutral on the whole thing, just one thing that would keep me in the neutral corner is the three proposed house lot, zoning changes on the left side, what we're looking at, the larger lot behind those, you see the little strip of land that goes between Custom Mold and those three lots?
Right in here.
Nope, just that one little strip.
Oh, here, here, here.
Right. When I changed the zoning on my lot, I was asked to keep that as industrial due to the fact that it would create spot zoning if I didn't. If the zoning change goes through, it kind of leaves me in a tough spot there, where I would want that little piece of land to be changed as well as the residential. That would keep me in the neutral corner rather than opposed to it.
I'll respond. So, I understand your comment, that to your question, the total area is 3.58 acres, 2.46 acres, so it's relatively a small area, and they're all houses at the moment. So, we basically put the zoning into the use that's already there, and if you look at what's around there, on the Taunton side, it's all residential, the area. To your point, given, you can't add any changes to zoning at this stage, but certainly over the next, if there's a need to revisit the zoning in this section of town here.
It's just with a 50-foot line strip of useless property.
Well, to the extent that you wanted to come back and do the same thing this gentleman has done, we could also.
Been through it, though, you know? I was asked to keep it that way when the zoning was done originally.
Right.
Don't you need four properties? Sorry? I was going to say, don't you need four properties? Otherwise, it's considered spot zoning.
Well, we have, that's why we have this section here, we have the four properties there. So, you have one 50-foot strip that goes up and around your property?
50 by 200 and change.
Okay.
It splits between the Pickett's home, which is one Eddie Street, the house on the corner, and Custom Mold. Custom Mold is obviously industrial, and people want to remain that way, which, then they'll be segregated into just one small piece of industrial property, which leaves my 50 by 240 strip basically useless. So, it kind of bites me.
Well, I think that can be cured, though, I don't, you know what I mean? I mean.
How? I don't want it to be cured later.
Why can't you just add it? Because we've noticed, by law, we can, we can take away, but we can't expand the area of the proposed zoning, which is how the zoning act is written. Actually, that's how it is.
How would he get it rezoned?
I didn't get notified till a week ago about this, so.
Well, he's getting notified till about a week ago, so.
The notice is still at the post office, most of them. Check there.
I put up signs myself five weeks ago.
Right, and I had to go because once I saw the signs, what's going on, so eventually I got a note in my mailbox saying I had to take someone up to the post office, but that was just over a week ago.
Yes.
So, I haven't had, you know, much notification.
I had to go to the post office three times, and finally I had to call Taunton Post Office to get it sent over to the Norton Post Office.
One at a time, please, so that we can keep track of what's going on. All right, if someone wants to come to the podium, state your name, so we can just follow the procedure here.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm going to have to stand up because I can't see across the crowd very well.
Walter Prewodowski, 305 Taunton Avenue. I'm not opposed to the people living across the street, but we just don't really want to have our land changed from commercial to residential.
And you're one of these parcels?
We're one of the, we're the one that goes down to the pond, to the Meadowbrook Pond. We're the.
The parcel on.
305, the top one.
You're the top one.
This is us, this is us right here.
No.
And we just don't, we don't mind the people living there, but we just don't want to have ours changed. We've been living with this for 40 years, we were commercial, and I don't see any reason to change it now, so.
This is funny to me. I, I, I left letters and tried to communicate with the Prewodowskis, but I haven't heard from them. Their daughter and son-in-law live right next door, and told me not to knock on the door or to try to make any more, any contact other than the letters that I have, so I didn't know this was coming at all.
Your parcel 3310.
Okay.
Parcel 3310 is included in all those. Right, you would rather not, you're saying you don't want your parcel.
I don't want my parcel changed if it's possible.
Is there any specific reason why you don't want it changed?
Well, we've been that way for over 40 years.
Do you intend to do anything with the property?
Well, we may be able, I mean, someday, maybe my children will be able to do something with it in commerci, I feel that it has more value as a commercial piece of land than it does.
It's not just that he couldn't have held it industrial for a year.
I think that's what I feel, and that's what we've felt for years and years and years. We've been there, my wife and I, 56 years we've had that house, 56 years.
All right. We'll make note of that.
I would agree also with the value of the property for them, would be more valuable as industrial, since they're grandfathered in as residential, it leaves more doors open for them.
Well, there hasn't really been any industrial without the area, but we'll comment on it. Someone else want to, could you just come to the podium, please?
My name's David DeCosta. I own a piece they're not going to build because it's industrial. I bought them all around, a neighbor of.
Prewodowski.
Prewodowski that just got up. I've been there for 70-something years, and it's been industrial, but they're not going to change me, but now they're changing everybody else around it. So, I just want to leave everything the way it is.
You like your land being industrial, you don't want it, you're not being opposed to it.
I'm not, but I just want to voice my opinion. They've been there for 70-something years, it's been the way it is now. All of a sudden, we got somebody who bought a piece of land, and they can't even stop the weather, and they want to change the whole neighborhood.
My name's Matt Pickett. My mother lives on 1 Eddie Street, so the house I grew up in. And I would have to agree with the sentiment of the last two gentlemen here. You know, I, for one, of course, don't like the idea of my house I grew up in being torn down and Duncan Donors being built, right? However, I do need to think about the value of that property and what's in the best interest of my family. I believe that the industrial zoning leaves more options open. I believe that that entire corner as an industrial parcel has much more value than changing that small section you see there, still leaving a large section of industrial behind. To me, the way it's broken up doesn't make sense, it doesn't seem to benefit the town and benefits one individual, so.
Are you the owner of that property?
My mother is.
Yeah, and she had, we have talked several times, and she has been supportive of changing.
I'm here, but I've been listening to all the other arguments, too. I'm open to any of it, seriously. And eventually, my children, all three of them, will be inheriting this property, and it's in their best interests, like, basically, what he says, because I'm not going to be here for another 45, 50 years. So, I'm just looking into the future, you know, and it's going to be theirs. You know, my husband's not there anymore, so it's just me, so I value what all these people are saying, and what he's saying, too, so I'm still open to everything.
Just to make a point, the totality of these four parcels is less than 48. Yeah, and your point is? My point is, if it's most industrial uses, we have bigger lots, and that's typically why things happen.
Location, location, location.
We were approached many years ago for all of us to sell our parcels.
At an extreme value.
Yeah, and the company was also approached for that entire corner, for them to build a mini mall type of thing, but the price just wasn't there, and so that went down backwards.
Any other comments on this specific zoning proposal?
Sorry, I'd like to speak as a resident of the town, that the town seems to be in my, you know.
I appreciate that.
Our town appears to be pro-residential and anti-business, so I think that turning this property into residential is going to be beneficial for us all. I also feel that it is, for all intents purposes, a residential property, and I also feel that the realtors feel that it is going to be, and properties will be more valuable as residences than they will commercial industrial.
But they already are grandfathered in as residential, so that value's already standing.
But the ones that aren't?
It closes doors.
Right, the ones that, that aren't will benefit from that.
None of them are, but they all are, already have homes, and they already are grandfathered in as residential.
So, this one should be residential as well, in my opinion, because.
But they're not residential, they're industrial.
But this one should be zoned residential, so that people can move into it and live in it, in it as a home.
I understand, but you're affecting the value of other neighbors' property in order to give the value to a home that was built as a model.
But I think that the value of that, of that being a residence is going to positively affect the other homes they have.
That value's already there, is what I'm saying.
The value will be lost if a commercial property goes in there.
If it's not, then they're already grandfathered in as residential.
Okay.
So, all you're doing is closing doors of being able to use it as an industrial use rather than.
I disagree. Okay, so, you stay in your opinion, you stay in your opinion. We'll take a moment. Anybody else want to come to the podium, please?
A woman in a pink sweater. Okay.
My name is Dennis Levine. I live at 307 Taunton Avenue, which is parcel number 339. I'm the one Samerson in the middle. Initially, when I was a voter by Mark, I was in favor of changing the area to the entire area into residential, considering we probably have no intentions of ever selling the home for purposes other than a residential home. My father-in-law, we were talking to him, Mark, Mark was correct, and when we told him that my in-laws don't really like to be bothered by people, so we, so we were the go-between, and Mark filed his application for the zoning before we got the response from my in-laws saying that they weren't particularly interested in having their property changed from industrial to residential. With that being said, with Mr. DeCosta not changing his property from, not being part of the rezoning at 306 Taunton Avenue, which is across the street next to parcel number 3332, it leaves us in a position that if Mr. DeCosta decides to put in some kind of some kind of industrial business across the street by someone doing whatever, it's going to potentially lower the value of our properties. I mean, I would love to see Mark be able to turn his parcel into a residential spot. The problem that I have, like I said, is that we're all interested in trying to keep our property values up, and by changing it to residential, I think we're going to be losing value on the property. Now, my question that I do have before the board is, when Mark bought the property after going down to the town hall and being told that the property was zoned residential and purchasing it under that, does he have any remediation against the town or whoever told him that the property was zoned residential and purchasing something that now he is stuck with and can't seem to sell as a commercial piece of property? Does he have any recourse?
No, the assessors doesn't determine, it may have been assessed as a residential building because it was residential, but they don't determine zoning, the place to have gone, he should have gone to the building department to find out what the property was.
But the thing is, is that parcel itself was never zoned as residential, it had always been zoned industrial, and there was a commercial piece of property on it.
That's what I'm saying to you, he should have gone to the building department to find out what the property was zoned, not to the assessors.
There's, the responsibility, except for the assessors' office being incorrect?
All the assessors, the card probably said was that the property was assessed as a residential value because it was being used as a residential home.
But it wasn't, you live as a residential home. Card clear this as non-commercial.
Yeah, there are hundreds of people in this town who have gone to the assessors' office, contemplating moving to this town to find out information about property, and to see a residential zoning on it, see a residential zoning on it, and then going ahead, signing a purchase and sale, and purchasing a home, only later to find out, hey, that land, that's commercial. What happens to your property values? I mean, this has happened over and over again, everybody I talked to. I'm Greg Vince of 23 Reservoir Street, and the Wheaton property across the street from me. Yeah, okay, we'll wait for that to come up, but as a generalization for the town, this whole nonsense about the assessors' data sheets is not right at all.
Anyone? Anyone else have a comment on the town avenue zoning?
This is a quick clarification. Did you say that his lot cannot be rezoned unless you get three other lots? Is that what I heard?
Yes, yes.
That's ridiculous. Where is this law from?
It's zoning law under, you can't just pick out one parcel land and change zoning for that one parcel, it's called spot zoning, and it's not allowed.
Is that Massachusetts law? Is that a town bylaw?
It's Massachusetts law, and I believe it's zoning, as zoning is developed across the country, so it's not just, it's not just here. You can't, you can't just pick, it has to have a district to it, you can't just pick up one parcel and change zoning.
And what's the zoning on the Taunton, on the Taunton side of the border here? How is that zoned?
Residential. But it's another town, we have no jurisdiction over the city of Taunton, so we only have jurisdiction over what's in town.
But it's a state law. Spot zoning.
And my only contribution is, when I come to my home from the center of Norton.
And my only contribution is, when I come to my home from the center of York, I have to stop at the top on the bridge to check the traffic behind me, because people think I'm going to Eddie Street when I'm going to my home at three oh five. So it's very unsafe. So I always stop at the top of the hill, and I look before I go down to bring my driver now from the Taunton side, and then I come up, I'm like this, because I have my signal on to bring to three oh five, and they think I'm going up to one forty, third one, so I'm like this when I go to my gap. So I don't want you to change anything.
I feel bad for this guy, maybe he sees what everybody else did, believes what they were told.
Classic.
There's only three houses from where this industrial assessment was done, expecting that all of that would be industrial eventually.
But it didn't develop that way, it developed residential for the most part.
It hasn't really developed, though. It's been the same, those houses have been there forever.
Yeah, but the actual road that goes through Taunton is all developed, so it's going to expand eventually. It's going to.
The signs that were in the corner for the Taunton industrial park, the industrial park is strictly down.
Trucks, after trucks, after trucks using that, you know. And they're now, so all those houses are exposed to that.
Correct, but there's still a residential force on that street, it's not even a small standard industrial park dropped down.
It's not that far away. Anybody else?
I have a question on commercial property. What is the lot size regulation for that compared to residential?
Well, that's industrial, that's an industrial zone, that's industrial two.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand is the minimum lot size.
Minimum lot size for a thousand.
Any other questions or comments?
I wasn't aware that, I wasn't aware that if you wanted to rezone, that you need, in the town of Norton, or is this in the state of Massachusetts, that you need four properties to rezone?
It's not necessarily four properties, but you just can't zone one property to a different use, it's different from everything else around, which is, that's called spot zoning. It's not allowed in any one of the state of Massachusetts, and I believe it's not allowed by case law throughout the country.
Okay, so in the town of Norton, let's just say, if you have industrial all around you, and you wanted to go industrial, does that one property, is that one property, is there a possibility of going industrial with that one property?
Yes.
If it's all around you?
If potentially everything else around you is industrial, and then you join into a larger district, yes, because then you're not one little spot that's different than everything else.
Okay, all right. Because I was just, yeah.
Anybody else on Mansfield, excuse me, Taunton Avenue?
It has to do with what the gentleman just said about forty-five thousand square feet for an industrial lot. His law is only nine thousand, I think you said?
Oh, no, it's larger, it's an acre.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, I'm sorry.
In Norton, there's ninety, point nine-nine acre, and another couple of acres in Taunton.
Which is... Anybody else on this? Okay, so, well, we have to, we have one hearing, and we have to continue with our closing. So, given that there are still a number of issues... So here's the board, and I don't know, the boards have any comment about this thing we're hearing tonight? We'll have to make a recommendation at some point, either to recommend this sit-down, or maybe we're not going to. So I don't know if you want to...
I mean, speaking for myself, it's fairly simple, three of the four property owners, and I sympathize with your situation, I scratch my head, we've done a lot of these variances, I'm not sure, other than changing that piece of allowing use variances, which creates a whole lot of issues. Three of the four property owners don't want their property rezoned. Certainly, I'm not your client to resist their wishes. They've been, all of them have been there since before zoning.
I tend to agree.
Yeah, I was going to second those comments as well. Personally, I would, you know, up until tonight, the information that we received was, you know, there was no opposition to the recommendation. It makes sense. It seems logical that those properties should be residential, but absolutely we need to consider, you know, particularly the folks that own those parcels. I'm, you know, considering that above, you know, some of the abutters and surrounding parcels, mostly the folks that own those parcels, we need to take that under serious consideration.
Right, so that being said, and if there are no other comments about this, we could, procedure would be that we would close the hearing, we don't take, hearing on this specific article, not the other ones, would take, and then at that point, the board would make a, make a motion, and then we'd take a vote, and then we could make a decision on this one, this one.
But just for people's understanding in this process, all that is, is a recommendation. This is still on the board for town meeting, and it's still, still going to be acted on, so it doesn't end it here, but the planning board, if we were to vote not to support it, would be on record as not being supported.
Does everybody understand the process for this? Okay, so I think we've heard from all the neighbors, and then we have a closing. Do I have a motion from the board on this?
Second. Close the hearing.
Oh, close the hearing. All right, the motion's still in, right? Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Then you make a motion on the, on this article for town meeting, and I recommend that we make the motion in the affirmative.
The board would recommend, recommend passage of the article.
Recommend, recommend the article.
Recommend, recommend passage of the article.
I have a second on that. So the motion is to, we always take a vote when we're affirmative, we do all that, but we're always understood. So the motion is to recommend the article to change assessment map thirty-three, parcel thirty-two, and change to back from industrial to R sixty. Motion's second, I'll take a look. Mr. Durant? If you don't support it... We're voting, so we voted for it publicly.
To exclude three oh five, to make it industrial.
So the motion isn't the affirmative, if you want to recommend to change this from industrial to R sixty, that, that, that the town meeting would vote yes, this is a very strong vote. Mr. Durant?
No.
Portion, I have to call, not being recommended. That was the first zoning article, the next zoning article we have.
Last speaker, anyone? There's a flag down. So I'm just going to introduce Leonard Street and Holton property, with a few of them. So this is nine parcels, approximately a hundred eighty-eight acres total. They're proposing that the residential eighty zoning is changed to industrial along Leonard Street, showing five of the one twenty-three. The aerial view shows you the four ninety-five interchange, one twenty-three Leonard Street. Draft article reads that would change approximately so many acres, consisting of these maps, these nine maps, these nine parcels, and the areas to rezone at this time. Some map showing where we are, so this is the residential eighty zoning. These are the nine parcels, you can see on the map, some of them are little coming shapes. This map shows you the regulated theme of floodways and wet areas on the site, so I can see there's quite a large amount of... And then here in blue, you have the zone two aquifers, and in green, we have the medium yield aquifers. The zone two aquifers are more protected. And then this map shows you the DEP regulated wetness area, and with those nine. So in my report to the board, which you can find under the start tab, the background is the properties in location Leonard Street. These nine parcels are outlined in detail with the attached article language. The nine parcels in question are partially occupied by resident and homes, partial businesses in recreational uses, much of the land is a green field. The proponent is facing a proposal for rezoning on a flex development scenario that we'll show you in a moment, of commercial retail warehouse and office spaces and associated land keeping an infrastructure, although it's very conceptual, it's developing. It is noted that in the attached letter from the town board and conservation agent, there's significant natural resources present here. Condi did come in for a meeting with town staff on March ninth, where we discussed some of the issues we'd like them to include in the presentation, which they're showing tonight. The board of select will fully support this proposal, and there are some comments on open space and recreation plans, land being included in the nine parcels. And there's also the butter letter attached in your folders under this tab two, which is all the article information from wayne and pass and the butter. We recommend the planning board conduct a review of benefits and detriment's proposal through the open public in the process, and recommend an approach to zoning that would support build scale commercial development along Route one twenty-three, implementation of complete streets transportation, infrastructure upgrades, improve community access to open space protecting the natural resources, and increasing our tax revenue from flexible site response and development. We also urge the board to consider the uses and dimensional regulations allowed under industries. So at this time, I'll pass it under to Condi.
I just want to preface this by, this is the type of, the vote is not on this particular development, the vote at this stage is to change residential zone to industrial, this is the type of development that's contemplated, but the vote is not on this specific development.
Thank you. With me tonight is Jeff O'Neill with Condi, brother Don O'Neill with Condi, and Mark Gibb with Condi, as our civil engineer. So we appreciate the opportunity to present what our intentions are to try to develop and rezone the Holton farmland right off of Route one twenty-three, four ninety-five. So a little bit about us is, we've been around since an extensive period, probably since the early nineties, developing quite a bit of industrial product throughout the England, and also, as you can see, we're also the owners of Norton Commerce Center, which is also in the town as well. What we're facing in the industrial area in the arena is we're running out of land, there's very few opportunities. Down at Norton Commerce Center, we have two very small lots that are left, capable of, no more than about ten or fifteen thousand square foot buildings. As you can see, kind of a list of the tenants on the right, that gives you a sample of some of the companies that we have brought to town, and have created in excess of roughly about a thousand jobs at that location. So it shows an example of the need of what's happening in the market today. There's two hot segments that are growing, industrial's growing, and downtown Boston's growing. So if you want to go to the Seaport District, buy a condo, buy an office building, those are the only two markets that are industrial and downtown. There isn't a lot of four ninety-five office being developed, we're a little bit overdeveloped in retail, and a lot of bricks and mortar stores, as you understand, are well being closed, because everything is going to the e-commerce market. So as we take a look at some of our sample buildings we developed, it gives you a sense, you know, we want to build and develop architecturally pleasing buildings that last an extended period of time. As you look at these, and these are industrial buildings, we have high bay distribution centers, we have manufacturing facilities, and as you can see, one of them up in the top left, that's a full-scale liquor distribution facility that's in Norton Commerce Center. So great-looking buildings, you can't really tell, high bay industrial is there, but they're pleasing, they're architecturally, and we want to make something that lasts, and that's something that is situated here that really exemplifies the experience and the park as well. So we take a look at the zoning that we're talking about, they're comprised of about a total of about a hundred ninety acres. As you can see, right off of Route one twenty-three, right off of four ninety-five, and then encompassing all the way down close to Janet and Dowling on the rear of the site. Again, as we look at a master plan, so this could be some of your first review of what we're trying to develop, a total of approximately twelve buildings, first, one, two, and three are closest to the highway, small accessory use retail buildings. These buildings are designed anywhere from eleven to fifteen thousand square feet, they provide small services to the park, ancillary details in that location. Buildings four, five, six, and seven, we go into more of the high bay distribution, they're situated close to the highway, any sort of truck traffic is close to the intersection as well, immediate on and off access. And then after extensive redesign of the back site, we had a lot of informal meetings in the month of November and December, with a lot of the most impacted residents on Dowling, Janet, Burke, and Leonard. And what we come up with is a redesign of a flex product, lower ceiling industrial, that's there with less impactful to the residents. So if we take a look in total, in summary, commercial and retail is roughly forty-one thousand square feet, office medical will be about sixty-seven thousand square feet, warehouse manufacturing about five hundred and sixty-five, and the flex industrial about a hundred ninety-five thousand square feet. So the total is about eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet. Traditionally, we know we have a lot of issues related to wetlands, flood zones, and everything else that's there. A hundred ninety acres of lot of land, there's no doubt about it, but what we can only build is about under nine hundred thousand square feet. If we had a hundred ninety acres that was all upland, we'd probably have about eight million square feet up. So you have a lot of natural resources here that are protecting and restricting the amount of development that you can do on the site. And again, we have an extensive amount of permitting that we have to go through, we really, we need to get off ground zero. Ground zero is rezoning into industrial, because what we have to do is nine to twelve months of permitting, we have a planning board, we have a site plan review, conservation, mass DOT, mass highway, and then we have the MIPA office and sewer water, all the through. Some of the samples that we'll get through on the master plan permitting, first of all, MIPA, MIPA looks at everything that we're doing down here on the project, so everything under the sun, including greenhouse gas emission studies, stormwater managing standards, also, they take the traffic permitting, which is mass DOT, traffic mitigation improvements, and also, we want to be careful of the timing as we coordinate with mass highway on the improvements that they're going to be making on Route one twenty-three, with sets of lights, sidewalks, and everything else. So we have a limited amount of time period before that roadway's open, and then it's closed up, and there's a moratorium, and you can't access the roadway in an extended period of time. And that's planned for two thousand and eighteen, as well as there are probably through, I believe, seventy-five percent designs on that infrastructure already. The good thing about the development is, we have to come back on every single site. So what we're here for night is to introduce the zoning, a potential layout of what this will look like, but we have... of what this will look like, but we have to come back site by site by site because we have special permit on eight buildings that's over 10,000 square feet. We have a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission on each site, and we also have site plan review. So we're here tonight to discuss the zoning and then each individual lot will come back at that time with a tenant in hand, with an individual building, with the project ready to go. Environmental sensitive areas, no doubt, we're addressing and we'll have to design for these standards. It is a sensitive area. So we have PVW, the bordering vegetated wetlands, we have flood zone, we have riverfront area, bank land, land underwater bodies and waterways. In addition, we have the ACEC we have to deal with and then the Zone Two Water Resource Protection District. As you look and combine with the development and the sensitive areas, there's 190 acres and we can see that we can't develop on. Everything surrounding us there has natural impediments to what we can do. So it has a strong restriction of a mass size development and what we're done is design around the areas where there is potential opportunity to place buildings. Design considerations, again, we want to, we'll connect to the town of Norton Water, the distribution, the sewer system. All sites, we're going to connect to the tri-town and natural gas, electric, and telephone. And the traffic mitigation will be determined once we're final in review with mass highway. So we took a look at the infrastructure and the circulation. As you can see in the first, there's a green line. The green line connects the sewer down the proponent's driveway, out Leonard and out 123, across the utility sleeve on Route 495, connecting to the infrastructure across the other pathway down to the tri-town expanded water and sewer treatment plant next to us in Norton Commerce Center. So that's how the sewer would be proposed to get there. Water, as you can see, we would connect from Janet Street down to 123. What we're trying to do is loop the two roadways, increase the pressure system for the whole area. So now we're all the way looped. We're not dead ending it in any sort of place. And I think that enhances fire protection, life safety, and everything else for the area as well. And then lastly, truck access, we're closest to the highway. We plan on widening Leonard Street to accommodate trucks to exit the sites. And as you can see, within 1,500 feet, around 495 going north or south. And that's where the trucks belong. So as we look at a quick close-up, and again, this is only conceptual. This isn't a master plan of what we're doing, but this is conceptual design and looking at it as proposed, buildings one, two, three are kind of retail accessory use buildings, anywhere from 11,000 to 16,000 square feet at the front. And this will take some time as we proceed through the process. If you look at an example of what that would look like in the next slide, these are sample retail facilities. Could look like a small strip center on the left, individuals on the right, small little tents. Most of these are small accessory use restaurants, et cetera, that could service the population. Next, we'll look at the industrial. If we take a look at buildings four, five, six, and seven, these are what we consider high bay industrial. Six is more two-story medical office head of the 25,000 foot structure. And these buildings, if you take a look at the next slide, give you a sample of what they would look like as a potential, these are what we built. This is what we're seeing today. This is what we've developed in the past. Good-looking product that would be a complement to the town of Norton. As we get into the back of the site, this is where we spent a lot of time on redesign and vice versa, we proposed a master plan here of a variety of flex buildings in size. These accommodate tenants anywhere from 15,000 to 25,000 square feet, even smaller. And what we've done is the circulation's smaller the outside for cars. Usually they operate no more than a shift and a half. The buildings are 24 feet in height and any sort of small truck port is in the center facing the courtyard of each of the buildings. And I want to be clear that there is no access proposed off of Janet Street. You can see here, the only thing that will be proposed off of Janet will be life safety and a breakaway gate for the fire ramp if they have to get on site. That's a requirement by code and by law. They have two entrances to get to the site if the driveway is open. And here's a sample of what flex buildings look like, smaller in size, similar to what we have over in Norton Commerce Center. As you can see, they're anywhere from 24 feet in height, usually 20% office, 20% manufacturing, 20% warehouse. And same on the next slide, it gives you another example. And so the advantages to the town, looking at the overall master plan of what could be done here, is our type of industrial park has very minimal impact in the town's services, police, fire, and water and sewer. We don't use a lot. We don't demand a lot of fire protection. They do inspections. These buildings are designed in the latest standards, sprinkler systems, and life safety equipment as well. Potential increases in taxes, anywhere from 650, probably up to a million dollars could be done based on the full building. In addition, any vehicle that has garage here, the excise taxes are directed to the town of Norton, as required by the state. So any vehicle that parks at one of these buildings has to register locally. And then new facilities, we expect anywhere from 200 to potentially up to 500 jobs within this park. In addition, we have construction jobs that benefit the workers in the greater 495 area. And also, our types of tenants help out the town, the park, with a lot of landscaping companies, accessory businesses, cleaning companies, food, online catering, those types of opportunities. All of these companies use the services of the town and they enhance them wherever they go. In addition, our tenants that we have, such as Norton Commerce Center, do a lot for the town. I know Horizon Beverage has done a lot. El Niloan, who's just under construction, has already done a lot. So expect that these towns give back. They do a lot. If they're going to locate here, they do a lot to enhance the town of Norton. And again, we have quite a bit of excess land we can't do it in with. And there's a question of how we could add it to recreation and for community use. So that's, we have probably at least 15, 20 acres of pure upland that has really, we can't fill on and develop on. So that's opportunity that could turn into something else, as well as access to the Canoe River, the public gas. Access would be available. So again, open space recreation is a possibility. Environmental, we know we have to do a lot. Access, we're on Route 495 where this type of park is required and developed. The impact on the community services is minimal. The viability, industrial dealing with one of the strongest segments in the market right now for real estate. And then the infrastructure, we're planning on improving, both traffic, mass highway, and everything else that would have to be done. And lastly, this is an opportunity to mitigate any sort of potential tax increases that could affect all of you in the town. We want to bring taxes to the town of Norton. This is what we have to do to develop. Thank you.
Could you put that slide back to where you had seven, eight, nine, or whatever of my page? When did that building, right there? Actually, could you go back so you can show the overview of that one now? When did that one, one more? One more? One more? One more? One more? That, it, there, the one, the one right on the corner, right there? Right on the corner? When did that one come into play?
Conceptual, remember, this is a master plan conceptual.
Yeah.
So that's probably about seven or eight acres of upland that's back there and access to driveway. And I know that your house is right below it.
Yeah.
But you know the lower side, so we're contemplating the potential of for the flex building going in or not.
And we're never contemplating any exit for all of those buildings except for onto Leonard Street. We're not contemplating that at all. Right? Oh, I'm at, I'm at.
The only exit for all those buildings is on the west.
On the west. Right down my driveway. Okay, I'm sorry. But that's new to me. That's the first I've seen. Different scenarios. The scenarios that you're showing tonight, that wasn't on Martin Green.
This is a master building.
And also, again, this master build potentially will just keep adding, keep adding.
So just to let you know, the process would be that they would have to go through an environmental impact study with the state and they would have to come before the planning board to get into the specifics of where each building would be located.
This is after we vote, though.
Well, the vote is to change, is to allow the use.
Yeah, allow the usage.
But the specifics of what this looks like has to then go through further study, review, and approval by the.
But we're going to, but we're going to vote, we're going to vote for the usage and then, but, you know, we're going to say one thing, right? And then, then we're going to have to go back and, right, we voted for the usage and this is just a scenario.
Correct.
Still.
It's still a scenario. It's not, none of the buildings are being proposed exactly with, it's the concept of what could happen here. The vote, the zoning is to change it from residential zone to an industrial zone to allow an industrial type of use.
I heard on one of the selectmen meetings that there was, Condy has been doing a lot of, a lot of, not catering, I shouldn't say that, but, you know, open, open multiple meetings with the people at Rosewood State's back there. I'm not with this. I really, this is, this is hearsay.
What is Rosewood State?
What is Rosewood State?
The other berms.
The berms, you're going to lower the roofs for them because of the lighting. You're going to bring it down. There was a lot of talk, even when we went to the TPC and we heard your, we heard your scenario speech.
That was the only time we talked with them.
All right, okay, okay. Well, I heard that there was, I heard, and like I say, I'm not, I'm not privy to it, okay? Because I'm not part of any association or anything else. But there's berms going up and there's talk about berms going up to keep, you know, to keep you guys not seeing the buildings. But I see every done tractor trailer and every car going right up my driveway. Now I see a building there. I just want everybody to know that.
Somebody lives there.
Not only that, but you're going to see more and more and more and more. Yeah. And now I see, actually, I see on the, is it the same, can I ask you this?
Why was your question?
The, the new maps that went out. They seem to have differed from the old maps that were out, that were posted on the trees when we, when we closed, there's new parcels on there? Am I correct in that?
No.
No, the little house on the corner, that, that property was not on there before, was it? The lot? And it's on, the parcel is actually, it's on the new map. And I'm wondering, it's gotten bigger now. And you just said that we can't add to things we can take away, but we can't add. And the, the property on the corner, and I'm just, I'm trying to recollect because I didn't think that that property was on there when I went to the town and I actually got.
It wasn't on there.
It wasn't on there. I don't think it was, but I can go back.
So what we're reviewing is the article that is, was posted, was listed in the newspaper with what you have here.
Okay.
That's what's being heard this evening.
Okay, but I'm saying, I thought we were revisiting because we canceled, we ended the meeting the last time. So I thought we were revisiting. And now, what is on the post of the yellow poster that's out there now, not tacked to the tree, the yellow poster that's in the ground that we couldn't spend the money for, that we got, it's in our bylaws, and I got the registered letter this time, is now different than the original.
From last year, right?
Yes.
So, so last year.
Oh, put away?
Well, it, it got put away and then this is what we were talking about tonight.
So we added, we did add parcels, posses. We might have, we might have added parcels to this.
Right. So what we're hearing is what's, what's being proposed tonight.
Yeah, so we're not revisiting. This is all branded.
Right, because it got shelved last year.
And this can change, too.
So we're starting first this year.
I have a number of hands up to 12.
I'm just wondering, who owns this land currently?
They can't add, they can't take away. They just add, right?
Who owns the land?
We're not revisiting.
Then you're holding the, the Holton State.
All of these separate parcels?
No, there's a couple of other parcels that are not on by now.
And they're all being sold to you?
Sorry, we're pressing talk at a time.
Have they all agreed themselves to you?
They're in discussions.
This isn't being done by eminent domain or anything?
I have a question on the roadway. When you roll a 495, it's lower lanes. You drop it down to two lanes where the entrance is to the lot. What's your, my, my intentions of.
The mass highway design. The mass highway design includes a, I believe, a third lane to widen and they go further up past Leonard Street and cover that location. And based on what we would be providing, there would also be a light including at the exit of Leonard onto 123. So there'd be three sets of lights coordinated from Leonard to ramps, two ramps on the other side. They all have to be timed equally. It's a dangerous, it's a dangerous bridge.
Yeah.
So coordination of lights will.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get people to the best.
March Condy, that little lot on the corner, 237 East St. Street. You're saying the infrastructure requires huge widening on this street. By how many feet?
We wouldn't know exactly how wide until the traffic studies complete and we coordinate with mass DOT and how their lanes come and go in that area.
My, my parking lot, and we've had this discussion of them, my parking lot and now my playground.
We're children's play.
Like that road, I've got a $25,000 playground that I just had done a few years ago. It's going to be destroyed by the lightning of the mess.
We wouldn't expect to modify the right of way in the property lines. Seen any improvements at that intersection. So assuming that things, um, how that, how that, what it's, you know, it's a town's road, so it's a typically typical 50 feet wide.
No, it's probably 40 feet wide.
The pavement, property lines.
So again, it's coming up to my property, but I insist it's my property. My parking lot, this school ends, goes into Leonard Street. My playground is six feet off Leonard Street.
So they, they would have, they would have to do a survey and get all that, all the property boundaries shown and then we'd have to design the, so I would have to figure that out. But that would become later on during a site plan review for this, for our specific development.
Suppose a site plan review isn't in my favor.
They take it by eminent domain.
More has, has hurt any, any development.
I mean, I am not in Norton moving forward and getting a lot of tax base and yada, yada, yada. But I still have quite a few years left to work and I like to do it where I've been for the last 21 years.
Okay. I'd like to have other people have a top two, gentlemen back there.
My name is Alex Mordoni. I live on Susan Circle, farther down. So, well, I take this road every day, so I love driving it. And when the plan first came up, I was pretty much, I don't think anybody neighboring's going to go for it. I like to drive, but reality is, the whole family's going to sell. And the one thing that just now doesn't have is a foreseeable increase in the tax base. And we also have, a perfect example, I don't know, 500 feet up the road, a brand-new, I don't know how many unit, multi-residential facility going up that just puts pressure on the town resources to no end, doesn't increase the tax revenue as much as equal development on the industrial base and that property would. I'm afraid to see that happen here. And the Hodes want to sell. The other parcels, I don't know what they're going to do, but there's an inevitable that they're going to sell and if it stays residential zoning, that's what we're going to see. I get it. It's going to be probably a little less noisy from a truck perspective, but you're going to have a few floors, people have balconies. You guys, a neighbor, you're going to hear 50 different balconies noise any time of the day that you feel want. I think it's important to think about tax revenues. We've already missed a vote last year to help our tax base increase. So the school systems are coming back there. I mean, we need this money for the school systems. But more importantly, I think Condy's has a proven track record in Norton Commerce Park. I think it's the best of, you know, I'd rather not have it personally, no. But I don't want to see the other alternative. I think this is the best. I think this is the best use of the property, and, um, there's a lot of benefits, the timing couldn't be better, the state's putting money in on that, on 123, Norton's not gonna have to put money in to a lot of the roadwork they're gonna have to do, but they, like they said, they have a limited time to get into that window, and, um, I just think, we should think about the alternatives, and I do feel that everybody lives right on the property, I know I'm not gonna change my driving habits, obviously, but, um, I just think we have to understand what the alternative is, if they go and sell to a residential developer, who doesn't have to worry about zoning issues, they can go ahead and go through, um, designs.
Gentlemen, here was before you, you need me next? If you have to, go to the podium, please.
My name is Lauren Seagull, I'm a resident of Red Mill Village, um, I circulated to a couple of people, a couple of groups, my, my comments, I sent it to the board, but apparently they hadn't gotten it, I distributed it to you this afternoon, um, I wanna take up what was just said last, first, because I think that's a real misnomer, um, I was very active in opposing the 40B project request from Red Mill Village, as a result of that, it took them over a year to get that done, uh, we had the support of the planning board because it was not consistent with the community, uh, and they, they, and they helped us, they didn't get it all the way done, they opposed it more than the selectmen did, but the selectmen did help us, but that project took over a year, right now, there are currently 488 apartments currently under construction, including 188 at 274 East Main Street and 290 at Avalon, and then to turn across those, so that's another 176 minutes, for a total of 650 40B apartment units in the vicinity, and if you think a major developer's gonna come in to that site and put in a major project, you're mistaken, especially when they've just said they have until 2018, and then that road's gonna be closed down, trust me, if it took a year without appeals for Red Mill Village to get it permanent, they're not gonna get it any time soon, if they try to go in there with another big 40B project, that's one. Two, traffic, the Red Mill Village went, when, when the 40B project came, came up, they had to do a traffic study, and the traffic study was, what they do is they, they propose what it would be like in 2018, at that point, the traffic study that they presented showed that Hastings Way and East Main Street, that's the entrance to Red Mill Village, uh, at, in the AM hours, they break it up into the AM hours and PM hours, commuting, the basic commuting hours, during the AM hours, as a result of that, that development, it was gonna increase, the traffic was gonna increase by 6% in front of our, our street, which was the level of service E, in the A.M., it was gonna increase by 8% to the level of service F, in the P.M., now, level of service F is failing, it represents a condition where street demand volumes exceed capacity of an approach lane with extreme control delay of the road, failing, so right now, we got a situation where it's projected to be failing, they're asking for a project, 800,000 square feet of building, industrial, concept wise, I'm not sure what they're gonna put up there, but if it's industrial, according to the zoning bylaws, um, for industrial use, they need 1,000 parking spaces, and for commercial space, they need 4,000 parking spaces, now, if it's commercial and if it's resident, if it's gonna be people working there, their working hours are gonna be those consistent with the AM and PM, they're gonna make the traffic, this all going on 123, crazy. One other thing that I wanna point out for my community, is that studies show for an aging community, um, the, the specifics are, let's just do this, um, it becomes serious, uh, when considering age, a study affirms as people age, their eyesight reaction time and cognitive ability and muscle dexterity may deteriorate, often made pass associated with driving, or difficult, with left-hand turns, more problematic, requiring speed, distance, and gap judgment, some who tend to enter crossways, a study found that in advancing age, after 65, increases by 8% the odds of getting into a crash involving a left-hand turn, getting out in the morning out of my complex and coming back in the evening is difficult, this is gonna make it very difficult, I don't know whether they have done a traffic study, and we asked that question at this point. The other question I have is, we've talked about all the revenue we're getting into the town, and I'm asking representatives now, have you, would you intend to ask for any tax incentives to the town in terms of this development?
No.
And does the town intend to grant them any tax incentives in terms of this development? The other question, what I, I found very interesting is, they also said, they only have two small lots, 10 and 15,000 square feet, I introduced them to people in Park Street here, they're, they're happy to sell their unit, remember that they are, if they wanna get together, they have about four acres, and it sounded like a bunch of other units, they wanna get together, and they don't have to send you some land, we have land now, this is industrial, the town says, we, you know, we run a revenue base, why take stuff that's residential, and convert it to, to industrial? And lastly, the only other question I had is, they're adding a sewer line, and the question I had is, are you tying it to the same sewer line that the 40B project uses, or are you gonna put it, you're behind, you're going, there you are, all the way up the building.
Going across the highway, the 40B sewer system goes north up towards east, it's up by here, which does not go to the wastewater system in northern.
Mr. Yerkes, just a quick classification, what is the minimum size lot in these for typical industrial development?
Typically, our buildings are 30,000 square feet or greater, and based on that, that's probably.
One of the pieces, I'm sorry. Yes, don't you, sorry, there's someone else in.
Good question, I'm in Kingsbury, that was adjacent to building number seven, uh, there's 40 units on 48th, it's right above here, so it's right above, right now.
Right.
Building seven, I will quickly switch onto another building, I would prefer our operations, so for maybe construction, for our operations.
At this point in time, we don't know if it's intended as a purpose.
Is there a particular noise that, um, is acceptable, um, in our operations?
Well, most of, most of any sound in operations is inside the four walls that are inside of here, and there are new energy codes, there's extra insulation.
Can't hear you, we have to design too.
There's, there's extra insulation, and everything that is operated inside the cells.
So there is some kind of environmental code that says you.
That's correct.
And, um, yeah, there's a, I do have a question.
I wanna know what you're gonna do with the Canal River, that's our water supply.
Yeah.
It's right there, right there on Leonard Street corner, goes across on the other side, and comes down to the wood.
Go back to where the two aquifers are, that's better on the way.
The real aquifer, the, the heavy one, not the medium weight one, 'cause there's two different.
Yeah, the, the parcels are within the zone too, which is the Aquifer Protection District, they have greater requirements for stormwater management, uh, there's a whole other set of regulations that we will have to meet in order to permit these buildings, um, we do not have, that was back in Tabitha's slideshow.
Oh, you sure?
Yes, yes.
All right, so Tabitha's slideshow, that's, that's.
Yes.
The, the, the main aquifer, the Canal River, this is my property, here's the corner, here's the river, and it comes across the street right here, and if you look at it, the main one is right here, and then it goes off a little bit later, but the main one right here, that's, that's right where you wanna put your road.
That's our water.
Correct, there.
That's right where the road.
Riverfront areas that we will need to permit through conservation.
You only will, to the back.
There are many regulations we will need to meet in order to, um, propose that.
We have the best of our lot, we're brewing now.
All that land is farming anyway, agricultural, it's not residential, isn't it?
It's zoned residential, I know it has been used for agricultural use, it has been farmed, but the zoning that's there on that property now is agricultural, excuse me, residential AD zone.
Slash agricultural, that's the way it was, it's been, right?
Which parcel? No, it's residential AD, that is the zoning on the land.
It used to be RA.
Yeah, it was, it was, yes, correct, but it was changed about 10, 15 years ago.
1978.
On the original proposal.
Originally meant last year?
Yes, okay, on the original, when I went to the planning board, and I, I spoke with, um, I, I forget her name.
Former planner.
Yeah, nice, very beautiful. She, she assured me that there's a big difference between industrial and commercial, and what we're looking to do is proposing to change from residential to industrial.
Correct, that's the proposal.
Okay, so why in your paperwork right here, does it say, well, potential development scenarios with a commercial and warehouse focus have been discussed, we zoned the land would have longer term implications for the town, and on the last, when she told me, when she told me, and that's where I blew up the last time, that we are changing this to, we're looking to, they are looking to change it to industrial, not industrial slash commercial, okay, so when you do vote, it's different, correct?
There, there are, it's within the industrial zone, there are certain allowed uses, and there are certain commercial uses allowed within the industrial zone.
But if it is commercial, it opens up a whole, correct?
It's commercial, all those other uses, we're not looking to, because the proposal's not to change it to commercial, proposal's to change it to industrial.
Okay, so why is our word, why is the wording always?
Just to clarify, just to clarify the zoning speak a little bit.
Yeah.
We have industrial zoning in town, we have commercial zoning in town, under each of those zoning types, we have uses that are allowed, in industrial zoning, commercial uses are allowed, in commercial zoning, commercial uses are, of course, allowed, but also there's a bunch of intricacies between those two zoning types that the board is aware of in our use in dimensional.
If it was industrial, would there be a, would there be a lows? My question, I guess, is what I'm asking, if it's industrial.
So I'll, I'll, I'll read this, I'll read what's allowed by industrial use, research and technical, whatever, warehouse storage and distributions, wholesale laws, or showroom storages on premises, sales of newer construction or materials, handling equipment, farm implement and machinery, life processing and manufacturing, factories, manufacturing firms, machine intensive processing, fabrication, assembly, auto body repair, paint, soldering, barrels welding shops, earthy mills, special permit, that's throughout the town, by special permit, not exclusive, allowed by right uses, uh, if they're more than 10,000 square feet or more than 25 profit spaces require a special permit, that's what our zoning says, which are the type of uses to find them.
So by a special permit?
No, no, but no, by the size of it, the size of the building, 10,000 square feet or more, which is the type of building we build, that all true.
Excuse me, it, it, commercial uses under 4.4? Those are all permitted uses, administrative professional buildings, banks, financial institutions, retail shops, hand, handcraft shops, hotels, motels, blue used cars, trailer boat sales, funeral homes.
Yeah, they are allowed, they have a court use, they're allowed. So there are additional commercial uses allowed in the, throughout the industrial. Restaurants. Are allowed by, are allowed by.
Hotels, motels. So how much, how much more, um, how much more difficult from a development standpoint is commercial versus industrial? Industrial sounds like it's all encompassing, meaning pretty much anything goes, as long as you folks permit, except for, it's like if it's over 10,000 feet, it's under 10,000 feet, we can do whatever you want.
They still have cycling.
I understand that, but, but what you're asking us to do here is to say, yeah, you know, we're giving you our input to say, yeah, put in the cart before the horse, basically, by saying, okay, we're gonna put this on the, on the warrants and get it voted for, that gets voted for, this plan is conceptual by everybody's admittance, and we basically have to say, okay, can we accept this, or can't we, if we accept it, which in my case, I would probably accept based on what we talked about a few months ago, but there's no real guarantee that, once it gets beyond the conceptual and the zoning is changed, that we don't end up with what you guys showed us the first time, that's my problem.
Well, the, the, they have to come back for a special permit.
I understand that, but at this point, you've already changed the zoning, so we have zero say in the special permit, we have say in the zoning, we don't have any say in the special permit, we can come here and talk, but at the end of the day.
We're here a special permit all the time, and it listens to butter, though.
I understand that, but at the end of the day, what it comes down to is, you're looking at a big lot that you're approving for dollars, and if they come back and say, well, we really can find anybody to fly out and do, but we can find somebody for, 250,000 square foot warehouse, that's my problem.
But we still could require a berm, we require sound walls.
I live next to Cisco, okay, now let me tell you, it's called a cost every weekend, because it's not because of the buildings itself, with the, with the new insulation and whatnot, it was all the trucks idling out there all night, I listened to that for 10 years, and I don't wanna do it again, I moved on to this side of the town specifically to get away.
I'm on 5 Janice Street, um, basically what he just said, basically, as soon as, this is conceptual, so as soon as you get the permits, living house of 40 years, I know what's gonna happen, we all know what's gonna happen, because we're behind the eight ball with industrial in this town, so, reason is, because of 140 down by with the TPC, which was gonna be the master of common, but it ended up being a TPC, I believe that's how it kind of went out, because it was supposed to be built up there, correct?
Right.
Right in front of the TPC.
It's still land.
It's all commercial, it's all land there, but it's been there for, since the TPC's been, you know, no hotel, we hotel, restaurants, we told, everything was supposed to go right there, but nothing's been there, except for ice cream that just came in, now, so I live on 5 Janice Street, so I'm, you know, 100 feet away from the emergency access, wow, as soon as you get your permit, you can do whatever you want, yes, they have to come to you, I agree with that, but you know, once you give them the land and change it, they're gonna do what they want. You can say, you can say, to your blue in the face, that looks great conceptually, but the first plan was, I don't know, 400,000 square foot and a 250,000 square foot in the back block there, until everyone started going, well, you're right next to Downing Drive and Janice Street and all that, but as soon as this goes away, and the permits go to them, they can do whatever they want, yeah, we can say, we need berms, we need fences, we need, uh, all that sort of stuff, but again, that's after the fact, because as soon as you, as soon as you, you know we're behind the eight ball with, with everything industrial and commercial in this town, because there's no real spot to put it, there was a 140, but now that's all messed up, and it wouldn't have been there any red. And it wouldn't have been there any residential. And that was a TPC so many years ago, that all should have been commercial and no one in town would have started, I think maybe the trailer park, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how far that goes back. They're the only ones that would have been affected, but now we're behind the eight ball, now we need the money to commit.
Just to clarify, if there is a special permit, they have to build according to the conditions of a special permit.
Right.
And they'll get.
But they'll, but they'll get.
But they could do well.
Well, 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 it would be conditioned of it, but this is still conceptual, correct?
Right.
So, so every single one of these buildings is the only building you are ever gonna build there, correct? So if this is what's conceptual, right now, if we change it to commercial industrial, or industrial commercial, whatever you wanna say.
No, commercial.
Commercial, just industrial. Those buildings exactly what's gonna be there.
Love to do it, all day long.
Right. And the, and the, and the other problem is, is that it's just like the lady said there, you're killing aquifers.
Right.
I don't care what you're gonna say to me about anything, it's industrial. You're putting it over main aquifers for the town's supply of water. You're talking about.
They couldn't get it to shore.
Right, back in, back in the seventies when Helios was there and it got torn down, they wanted to put a gas station, they said, no, because there's an aquifer there.
And in the summertime, when our windows are open, we're gonna hear all of that because we're right behind.
But there's still main aquifers that are going through that whole entire piece of property, and everything behind there is all wetlands, even on these plans here that are on this, like you said, it's ninety percent wetlands.
Massachusetts has the most strictest permitting regulations in all of the country. And, and controlling by putting rooftops in, we're controlling the drainage, we're controlling the water, we're controlling where it goes. Any water that hits one of those rooftops is clean water, that's practically drinkable water, and we can use that and direct it. And if you're looking at everything that you can touch, we can't even go near it. So when we design our detention bases, our recharge areas, everything else that happens, we have to do it.
Right.
Excuse me. We have to do it by the strictest of regulations that's in Massachusetts, and, and you can't, you can't, you can't fool around with this stuff anymore. This, this we have to design according to the tightest guidelines that's today's market and everything, and, and you guys do a great job down in Norton protecting it.
Right. But that's all I'm gonna say, is, I just think, once the permits are given, once the permits are given, there's no saying what, this is conceptual, there's no saying what can go in there.
This is the zoning change, permits, talk with the side.
For clarification, someone earlier asked if Condyne would ask if we could eligible for a tech or something of tax arrangement. And it's my understanding, and it may be incorrect, which is why I want the clarification, that any operation that wanted to, that wanted to operate out of any one of these buildings, that entity could come forth and request.
No, I don't.
I don't either, I'm just, I wanted to get that clarification.
I don't, I'm not familiar at all.
Right now, Condyne is building two buildings, recently permitted through the planning board, no tips on those buildings. We don't give tips out to every development. If you go down to the Commerce Center, must there four buildings, I believe, were built with tips out of all the buildings down there? And I challenge you to go down and look at the quality of the buildings that were built down there. And each, each time we give a tip, it's very specific, it's not just, we don't just hand out tips in order to hand out tips. The last two, we gave, well, we gave a tip to Elm Island. Elm Island's building permit fee was one point four million dollars that the town got from Elm Island, just for their building permit fee. Their tip the first year is fifty percent, so we'll get the new growth the first year of that tip. Waste Management got a tip, but they're, they are paying on all the excise tax on their vehicles. We had to give tips in order to attract businesses to Norton originally. Now we obviously can be very selective in what we give the tips. And you can go down and see the quality of the work that's in our Commerce Center, and that's the same quality you'll probably see here. There was a question about warehouse. Well, a warehouse, if you zone this commercial, a warehouse can go in a commercial zone with a special permit. All these buildings are gonna require a special permit, because I don't think they're gonna build anything small than ten thousand square feet. So everything's gonna require a special permit.
Twenty-four hour.
By rezoning, you're not granting them anything, they still have to come back to the boards, as they've said. As far as the open space, this property is for sale, as someone said, the Houghtons are gonna sell the property. It's three million dollars. The town doesn't have three million dollars to go out and buy this property, so that's off the table. But through this development, where the driving range is, for example, cannot be developed, that is gonna, that will be staying open space. It'll give us access to the river, that you, someone had a concern about the river. There's nothing that can be done within two hundred feet of that river, and we will have the ability to get to the river through this open space that the company is gonna leave there. As far as water and sewer, they're gonna bring new water main down, they're gonna bring the sewer down. If this was developed, as everyone's concerned about the aquifer protection, the Houghtons are gonna sell the property. If it doesn't go this route and it goes residential, they're not gonna pay to bring the sewer down there. They're gonna put septic in, and you're gonna have septic systems in your aquifer protection area. This is a way to develop the area, plus keep open space for the use by the town without us having to spend three million dollars to get some open space. So I hope everyone will support the project.
I want to give other people a chance to speak, or have it.
Hi, I'm Maureen Strazinski, I live at Kingsbury Dome, I'm president of the association. We own a piece of land here, and I just wanna tell you a story, and then I have a question about the process. We are on this piece of land right here, across from the donut, it's on the opposite corner. We tried a few years ago, we wanted to sell it, our association needed the money. The Conservation Commission wouldn't let us. They said, there's a conservation restriction on this land that has to be removed. So my question is, if you change the zoning, what does the Conservation Commission have to say? Should not they have input, the only vote to change the zoning?
Okay, remember, the vote to change the zoning is a town meeting. The vote tonight is, is just the, we're having a meeting. Town meeting has a vote to change zoning, but nothing we do tonight changes zoning.
But my question is, when a proposal comes forth to change zoning, should not there be input from the Conservation Commission on the impact of that proposed zoning change?
There has, we have, we have, we have comment from the Conservation Commission.
Because we're gonna be stuck now if Condyne doesn't buy our land and help us remove that conservation constriction, and they told us we'd have to go to the state for a bit. Yet, the towns willing to change zoning for a group, but yet homeowners and taxpayers in the town couldn't have the cooperation of the town. They're not gonna.
Yeah. Yeah.
When the developer was built, a conservation restriction was put on, on the land, that's under Article ninety-seven of State Constitution, so it's, to release it, you have to go through a process, which includes vote of the Conservation Commission, a vote of selectmen, and vote of state legislature.
Not necessarily. Our attorney has checked into it. If the Conservation Commission and a selectman vote, you don't have to go to legislature. If the Conservation Commission and the selectman don't vote, we could go to the legislature independently, as Horton has in a number of cases, to get that change. It doesn't relate to the open space and item, we have plenty of open space around it. The deal was cut with the developer at that time and the Conservation Commission. So what I mean is, the developer cuts the deal, the taxpayers don't get money. So my question is, should there not be input from the Conservation Commission before you rezone this land?
We do have input from the Conservation Commission.
Is it public?
What is it? What is it? I will read the letter. And it also includes some of the information that was shown on the maps earlier.
Yeah, do we see that big article forward back up there? I mean, is it really just, is it just pushing a button or something? Can we just see it?
I will read the letter from Conservation. We're looking for the letter. Anyone looking for the letter? Have a comment? Last one smoking yet?
I just have one question. Gentlemen referred to putting in residential with septic system. Considering the wetlands and the aquifer, if that were residential and it was developed, exactly how many housing units would be allowed in that area, considering?
Not many.
Exactly.
Not many. RA.
I have, this is a letter from the Conservation Agency of Goodtown, I'll read it. It says, Conservation Office has reviewed the plans entitled Town of Norton Open Land Letter Street Existence zoning dated twenty seventeen to rezone the residential eighty areas to industrial. Please be aware that this area has significant environmental resources. Under Wetland Protection Act, the following wetland resources are present. Bank, boarding vicinity of wetland, boarding land subject to flooding, which is the ten year flood, flood plain, twenty year flood plain, sorry, land underwater bodies and waterways and river fund area. This property is located within the Canoe River area of critical environmental concern. The property is located within the federally designated Canoe River sole source aquifer. Property is listed in the Town of Norton Open Space and Recreation Plan as a high priority for preservation. The property is located along the proposed Canoe River Greenbelt. Five hundred foot wildlife and recreational corridor for five towns is proposed for the Canoe River Aquifer Advisory Committee. Development of this area will require wetland permits from the Conservation Commission. Well, that was with the areas that we've shown on mapping, so we, we are aware that there are environmental resources here. Condyne has indicated they would also be doing presentations, it's something that they would need under the Wetland Protection Act with the Conservation Commission. Someone else smoking yet?
Yeah? I'm Tommy in Dulceville, I live on one oh one Bird Street in Norton. I've, I've lived in town for forty-three years, so I've been through a lot of changes in this town in the last forty-three years, development-wise, tax-wise. I heard a talk earlier about how this is gonna increase the tax base by close to a million dollars. I'd like to ask everybody in this room here, you've been in town for a while, have you ever seen your taxes go down?
No.
Not once. Every time something gets built, an industrial one, taxes never go down. So don't buy that argument. Don't buy it. What we need to do is turn this thing down. It's quality of life. Think about your families, think about your environment. Why did you buy in Norton? What was the reason you bought here? You bought here because you liked the area. You liked the open spaces. All this talk about industrial, let's change it to industrial, let's build some more commercial buildings. Do you know what that's gonna do to the traffic on one twenty-three?
Horrible.
It's bad enough as it is now. I can't even get out of Bird Street. I can't even get out of there in the morning right now, with all the buildings around there. This is gonna be a nightmare. You put this in, you're gonna regret it. I for one, am voting in town. Just out of curiosity, how many would vote no? Okay, planning board take that into consideration, please. I rest my question.
Donnie Andreasen, five Janice Street also. I just wanna know if anybody's considered the property values, how that, this will affect our, our property values and our values?
Yeah.
Because they'll go down.
Jeff, Jeff, question for you. Have you, have you considered using any of that land, especially the land way in the back off of Leonard Street that abuts Janet and down? Have you considered taking a look at maybe making a solar farm out of there and doing the ROI on that? Or is that not your business?
That's not our business. We don't have solar on the roofs.
Would you consider selling it? And to somebody that might be interested in that?
Anyone else who has to smoke yet?
I just, I'm really concerned about the, the water. I'm really concerned about the water, not just here, but in other areas, you know, the places that, you know, are, are watersheds, you know, whether there's level one, two, or three within Norton. And, and having wetlands property, I've seen this happen in other towns over and over again, where the contractor will go in there, look at the bulldozers going, go, oops, we tore up some wetlands. And then they go back to the town, and the town says, well, just replicate it over here. And they build this, this stone-lined mosquito pond. And that's, that's to replicate your wetlands. And, and I saw ponds around your conceptual buildings over there, some mosquito ponds, and, you know, and I know that's all wetlands areas, but, you know, and, and the water in Norton is, is horrendous. And, and we rely so much on these aquifers and, and water protection zones. And I'm, I'm not involved in this area, I'm in Reservoir Street, but I'm in a level two watershed zone. The areas across the street from me have wetlands, and, and I'm really concerned, and I get brown water constantly. You know, so, I, I just don't, you are playing with our water, water is life and all this. And, and we have no other water resource except what we have now. And, and to take a chance that that can get messed up by chemical spill, by roads, by anything, you're playing with everybody's lives. Yeah, I, I just, no. That's, that's all I had to say on that.
Wetlands and developers doing some, and wetlands, that might happen somewhere else.
Oh, I've seen it happen.
If you think that can happen here, you haven't met Jennifer Colino, Conservation.
We're not worried about the Conservation land, we're worried about the aquifer. Where we drink our water from.
Did the Water Department submit a statement?
Oh, the hell with the Water Department.
The other four towns, Carron, Foxborough, Annefield and Easton are buying the land, the towns buying the land near the aquifer for a sole source of drinking water. We wanna put an industrial park on top of it, or make an industrial land that we can put a gas station.
No, don't allow gas stations.
You don't, no. On the special permit, you do. You can give a special permit.
There's also a water resource protection.
It's so easy to get special permits.
But yet we can put diesel trucks on top of there. Air conditioning units, they got oil in them, they leak down the drains, you won't even know it when they contaminate the water.
My name's John Shale, little Reservoir Street, it's like Greg. I'm gonna come off wrong, I hope it doesn't come off wrong, this is more for information so I understand something. I'm gonna need a little help from you and Mr. Eunice. I work in a town of ninety-five. The biggest fear is that forty B or something other than this comes in. I'm not advocating for this, I just want you to understand this, this happened in my town that I work in. We talked, you remember what I'm talking about, right? That town just went to a housing court, if I'm talking about it correctly, and lost by one tenth of one percent for a hundred and eighty-four forty B apartments. I'm not doing that to scare you, I'm doing that to be factual, you can go find it, it's on the front of the newspapers and everything. That town wanted to build eight houses in one area, probably over fifteen years ago, they got two hundred and eighty-four apartments courtesy forty B. They keep on losing and losing and losing. They have a horrible track record, which I apologize for, but what I'm trying to relay to you all to understand this, and these two gentlemen would be the best to answer this, under forty B, we have no control on what they do. Am I correct?
Except for selling.
Well, I just, I want people to understand this, I'm not, again, I'm not advocating, I understand your anger.
Keep in mind, all those apartments on one twenty-three right now are forty D.
Yes, I know that, I know that.
So has that been put into consideration in the town?
Yep.
Once you reach the required amount, you can watch out for forty D.
You're correct, and I'll explain something to you. Different angle.
We're not at that amount.
No, I, I know that, but if, if.
We're not at that amount.
It's public, it's public, right, we're. It's public, it's public record.
We are not at that amount. How do you know? Who's up the data for that?
If I may.
Wait, wait, wait. Can I answer your question? We get a report from the state every year, we got our report just recently, including two seventy-four East Main. We are eight percent.
I'm advocating with you, I, I am a town employee, Mr. Eunice knows. It is mind-boggling what they choose and don't choose for houses. The next door neighbor to your house, a very nice house, could go off for sale. And you're sitting there, and all of a sudden, the next thing you know, there are different types of vans, or they, they pick houses. And they, the state hospitals, they move people in in wheelchairs. We walk into houses on my job on a normal basis, and we go, "What is this?" And we don't even get told about it, they just pop up. The town I work for, I mean, I'm not taking anything away from what this group is, ferocious. And they've been to this court, I think, three or four times. And I tell you, one tenth of one percent, it's across the news, they're mind-boggling. And what that builder said was, "We won." And they smiled right at the board and said, "We won."
Right, so in this case?
I'm just trying to put that out so people understand that.
Forty Bs could happen today, whatever, but changing the zoning doesn't affect forty Bs.
No.
It happens in industrial.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't need, forty Bs are already in the works in this town. They're already in the permitting process.
Unfortunately, we have projects that have been approved but have not been built. But after two years, they don't count on our counts to get to our ten percent. Though the state keeps giving them extensions, they don't count towards our ten percent until they get a permit approved.
So I don't want to go too far afield, it's not up here in that forty B, forty B has nothing really to do with proposing to change.
It doesn't matter what they can do with it.
But I think it's important, yeah, but I understand what you're saying. But the forty B is a concern for a lot of people in this room right now. Because they're thinking, okay, well gee, if I don't approve this for industrial, you're going to throw forty B in there. Well, I think what we've got to take into consideration is, even though the numbers don't reflect that two percent, there is permits that have not been taken out yet, you're saying? Those people should be at the front of the line anyways, right? Because they've already began the process in some ways. So that should amount to the ten percent.
Or over.
Ultimately, ultimately.
Again, hearing tonight.
I know, I know. I just don't want everybody to start thinking, oh God, if you don't approve this, we're going to put forty B houses in there, point five, point ten.
We don't, we don't want to go industrial, is it going to bump our forty Bs?
No, that's nothing.
You going to sell them for forty B?
No, that's not. It's an independent decision.
So tonight, the planning board has ordered tonight whether to move the star or the gazprom. Is that your place?
Correct.
So that's really the only, all of these comments will be hopefully spoken again at the town again. But your voting, whether the move is hard or not.
Correct, right.
I'd like to ask a developer, if the back lots, the twenty-five and fifteen parcels, if they were zoned commercial, would that restrict you from doing any development that you have in your ultimate plans that you just, you drew?
If it's zoned commercial, it would allow retail and anything else. Back lots, way in the back. So our proposal is, is tonight, is to zone in industrial. And the only accessory used commercial that we're proposing, which is out on the front of Route one twenty-three.
The difference?
I'm sorry. And as we said today, you know, I can't remember the last time you saw a new Home Depot or new Lowe's going, it's similar comments, but. E-commerce has taken over, and that isn't in play anymore, most of everything else. You don't see those now. You got malls. You got Jason Payton shutting down stores, you got Macy's shutting down stores, you got Silver City Galleria, and Four Anchors, right?
What you're saying is that buildings that you're building could be empty too. And we could be stuck with it like Paul Smith.
But it's kind of, but it's a change of times, when everyone is, does anyone order from Amazon here? Right? People are ordering from Amazon.
Right, wait, one person at a time.
Amazon's just thirty-nine square feet and a full river, and you size. Eighty-five percent of tenants aren't working, and it's helping. Most of them are only commerce.
My question, what exactly would it mean? I'm going to ask about zoning, I was asking about commercial. Obviously, all of those examples, you noted, would not be built, but a commercial is likely to be. There will be more of retail. But the difference between industrial zoning and commercial is, in industrial, you can build factories, manufacturing farms, machine-intensive processing, fabrication and assembly, auto-voy, repair, paints, soldering, or welding. So, in those back lots, is your plan, do you intend to build any of those type buildings that are excluded?
We don't know the tenants now, so we can't confirm them. Because that's not their heart there. The intent would be if Intel wanted to commit into the facility, or they want to take a twenty-five thousand script of the facility. Analog Devices wants to come down and import fifty thousand script. Companies like that, we don't want to restrict those great companies coming to town in Norton. We want to invite them in and embrace them.
What, in that A job? You have other lots, you could attract them to at the beginning of the street? I'm referring to the back lots, is that parcel twenty-five?
You're concerned that there'll be heavy industrial use in there?
Well, what I'm trying to do is, is you're going to vote affirmative tonight, trying to provide some level of protection for those homes that are in that director, Janet Street Downing Drive area. And if you altered the article to approve those back parcels, fifteen and twenty-five and twenty-five oh one, to commercial instead of industrial, to at least provide some layer of protection.
Okay, under the zoning act, we cannot do that. We can only vote on the proposal that was noted as a public area. So the notice, the notice was to change residential to industrial. We can't, we can't at this point change that commercial zoning, we have to withdraw this and start over again. There's a certain procedure for changing zoning that is prescribed by the state law, and we have to follow that process.
I thought I read that the director has the visibility to alter the language and change the article itself tonight before you vote on it.
We can delete, we can delete, we can modify, and we can take parcels out if that was the case. But we cannot change the, the overall intent over what was proposed.
All I'm asking is to sort of modify, for those three parcels to be approved, commercial versus industrial?
We can't, we can't do that by the way the, this was noted as proposed.
Great question. So if we make a motion to vote to make it industrial excluding these three lots?
We could do that.
We could do that.
We could do that.
So are you suggesting, sir, if we say we make a motion to approve, to make it zoned industrial excluding eleven twenty-five oh one, twelve fifteen, you'd be happy with it? I'm, I'm speaking for everybody. I'm running for planning board myself, and I try to understand the needs and the comments that we heard tonight. And I think that's a good compromise at this point, because otherwise you're going to vote to approve the entire article.
So our goal tonight is only to recommend to town meeting a certain language for the article?
But now we're changing the language.
Right.
From it just industrial.
We can reuse it, we can't add new areas that were not noticed already.
Because you're not speaking for me as far as moving anything commercial.
But you can ask for that to be done to your piece of property.
No, no, we can't change anything commercial on the nose. We cannot vote. We can take out parcels, we cannot change, we cannot vote to change the zoning forms to commercial. The article is to change the form, R eighty to industrial, for certain parcels, but we can't pull parcels out.
What Mr. Durant mentioned, just exclude those three parcels, I think would be a good compromise at this point, given all of the opposition, especially with those back lots and these front homes.
And also, to let you know that that could also be done through amendment at town meeting.
Trying to do this, or add to it?
It can be done at a town meeting. At a town meeting, the procedure is you have to come up with a written amendment, and that's then the articles discussed at the meeting. So again, hearing what people are saying tonight, final vote on to change is that town meeting. If you could quickly?
Sure, the last time this came up, it was my understanding that the planning board recommended to the selectmen that only about half of this project go forward, and it'd be limited to the south side of Leonard Street. Could the board indicate to us that they're feeling after what they made that recommendation, and do they still feel that way?
That was our last, the last time.
You, you had recommended to the selectmen, and they cut it back by half.
I think my concern at that point was the abutting residential uses, Janet Street and Downing Drive at that point. That's where that came from.